7:05, I'm going to call the Village Newglers Board Meeting to order. Lynn, if you do the roll call, please.
Sure. Roger.
Here.
Here. Yep.
Yep.
Chuck?
Here.
Mike Ganser?
Here.
Sammy?
Yeah.
Michael Bell?
I'm here.
Peggy Cruz?
Present.
Lori Wertz?
Here.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. We have a quorum. I'd look for an approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Say your name, please.
Tammy.
Mike Ganser, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item three, public appearances and citizens comments, we'll go past that. Down to approval of the consent agenda.
Well, this is Tammy. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Who seconded?
Hi, Michael Bell.
Okay, Mike, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item five, Parks and Rec Committee, A, discussion consideration Garner Park Improvement Project bids.
In summary, the bid window closed in March and the bids came back much higher than I anticipated. The thought was that the market was competitive at the time that we were bidding and the contractors didn't necessarily need the work and so the prices were being driven up. The engineer on the project also thought that the bids were unusually high. So the Parks and Recreation Committee met and has recommended that the board reject all bids. And we will look at if there's any cost-saving measures, but also we would proceed with working with the Parks and Rec Committee to determine the scope for rebidding. And it could be rebid as it was previously, or the Parks and Rec Committee might recommend some changes. But we'll start working with the committee again. But we are looking for a rejection of all those bids formally at this time.
This is Peggy Drake. What was the expected budget total for that improvement project? What were they looking at in terms of dollars?
We had a high estimate. We had a high estimate of about $300,000 that we... That was the high end. And they came in, the lowest came in, without any of the alternates at just under $400,000 and with the alternates included, approached $600,000. So we were looking, certainly, we had hoped in the $200,000 to $250,000 range, $250,000, we thought, would have been, you know, higher. And then $300,000 at the very top end is what we were expecting. But obviously, we did not get that.
Yeah, that's what I... I thought it was like $250,000.
Those figures are in your packet.
Packet, yeah. I'm going to make a motion that we recommend rejection of all bids.
No, just no recommendation, just reject all bid.
Okay, okay.
Michael Bell will second the motion to reject the bids.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item six, Public Works, Public Safety, discussion consideration street use application for Stussy Kenzie American Legion Post 141 for Memorial Day Parade on May 25, 2020.
I was in contact with the parade organizer. They did indicate that they would like to hold the parade. And the fire departments and EMS departments have agreed to participate. Their plan at the time I had spoken with them was that their color guard would march six feet apart. There's four of them, and they would be followed by a car parade. There would be no groups of people within the parade in order to maintain social distancing. Reviewed it with the police department and they didn't believe significant crowds would be a problem for this event. And if it was approved, staff will utilize social media to remind spectators to maintain social distancing and limit interactions to people outside of their household. Even with the lifting of the order through the Supreme Court actions, the recommendations from the health department are still, you know, to avoid group gatherings of greater than 10 people. And with that in mind, the Public Works and Safety Committee did recommend approval of the permit with the condition that it be a car parade. The color guard maintained its social distancing as the parade organizers stated and that no candy or other objects be handed out to any spectators.
I would move for the approval of the Memorial Day Parade. Mike Ganser?
I'll second that.
I got Lori on that one?
That's fine.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, this is Chuck.
Yep.
Just to clarify this, my latest email from the Legion Commander, unless I'm mistaken, it said that they were going to have individuals march if they wished. Frankly, I don't care, but I just wonder if there's a miscommunication here.
If they made that change, they did not pass that information along to me. I think the board could... I apologize.
I don't think that was a change. That was the setup from the start. And I can't find my email on that. And I, you know, it's quite possible I'm mistaken, but I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. Let me see if I can find that quick.
As a condition of approval for the permit, I think the board could stipulate that they would like it to be a car parade and to issue the street use permit, but obviously, that's the board's discretion. When I spoke to Steve on the phone, he did indicate to me that it would be a car parade with only the color guard marching in person.
Okay, well, that satisfies me.
But they may... It's possible that they did change it after the regulations were lifted because I spoke to him before the safer-at-home order was lifted.
Okay, well, I don't think they changed it. I just found the email I received as a member of the American Legion. "Anyone wanting to march would be greatly appreciated. Or if you care to join the parade in your vehicle, great." So that's why I brought this up.
No, that certainly does sound like that they are inviting people to march.
Well, it certainly does. And as a, you know, member of the Legion, I know how these things go. So I guess if it's... I guess if this application is approved as written, it's not a problem, right? We just have to notify them.
Yeah, correct. We would notify them of those conditions.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure everybody's on the same page and nobody's mad in the long run.
Hey Drake, it's Bert from the police department. I talked to Steve also, and he basically told me the color guard was marching. And typically, the people who ride on like the tractor-pulled wagon, you know, kind of pretty much the older group, were the ones that weren't going to be in that... They weren't having that wagon this year and it was just going to be the car parade with them. And historically, other than like a marching band or something like that, there wasn't all that many people, particularly, you know, veterans marching in it, so.
I understand. I just, you know, want to put this in black and white. And, well, I've told you what the email said, so take it from there.
I guess my only question would be...
I'm not marching, so I don't care.
I guess, Drake, my only question would be then for guidance. I guess if there's more than four people in the color guard marching, should we stop it? Stop those marching?
Actually, I think the color guard, I also think that was part of the latest email that they would like up to seven people for the color guard, which is pretty typical.
I would...
Let me just... We'll need or would like seven veterans available to perform honors. That's the color guard. I'm not trying to put this thing down. I just want to make sure that there's no hard feelings in the long run, so.
I understand, and I would... Depending on what conditions the board did end up approving, I would make a phone call to Steve to let him know of the board's direction as a condition of issuing the street use permit. And hopefully, we could... That would avoid any circumstance where there is a misunderstanding where, you know, PD was in a position... We could hopefully avoid that, you know. And if it's... The difference between four in the color guard and seven in the color guard is, I don't think, would be too problematic. But if we... I would clarify with them that it is a... The color guard would be the only ones marching and that it would be a car parade. And let them know that's the expectation that the board set when they issued the permit. After that, it would be, if they were outside of their permit, then I suppose, you know, I don't... We'd have to... That would be a difficult position to be in.
And that's why I'm looking for the guidance today, so we know what kind of position we want to be in.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I mean, we would expect, we'd have to enforce what the board approves tonight. So we would have to enforce the permit as approved. This is how I would think that the board would want its staff to operate.
And I agree with what you said, Drake. You know, I just want to know which way we're going to go with it.
I guess I personally am not concerned if they go to state. I mean, like, the social distancing part matters more than anything, as long as it doesn't look like they're forming a crowd. And I've been to that parade every year for a lot and I don't think we even have to worry about that many people being along the parade route in any kind of crowd form because it's not occurred that way in the past. So I think, you know, for my opinion is, is use your judgment. I mean, if it looks like it's getting ridiculous. But if it's like it is every other year, they've already taken the marching band out of there, which would have been where there would have been accumulation of... I don't think that this is going to become an issue. I really don't.
And I would just like to clarify that the PD is no longer in a position to enforce any type of limit on public gatherings, that there is no regulation on Green County currently for groups. So it would purely be the participants of the parade and how the village board wants the parade organizers to operate the parade as a condition for receiving the ability to operate on the public traffic lanes.
Okay, thanks.
This is Peggy. Why don't we just approve it as written? And even if there's 40 people in the color guard, as long as they're maintaining social distancing 10 feet apart, it could be as long as they want. I'm assuming, and I'm sure those numbers won't be that high, but if it's a car parade and the color guard maintains social distancing, I don't see, you know, what the problem is. If they want it to get to be a long parade with one person every 10 feet, then so be it. But I don't think it'll get that. I don't think it'll get to that.
That is the motion and that has the second on the floor, is that as written. So if the board is comfortable with that and chooses to approve it, that is, that's how we would essentially operate, as you had mentioned, Peggy.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I agree with Peggy and thanks for clarifying that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second then. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, consideration discussion, use of donation funds for purchase of Police Department UTV.
I'll give you a quick summary and then if you have any questions, Bert or Jeff are both available tonight. A generous donor, who is at this time requested to remain anonymous, has offered to donate funds for the Newglers Police Department for the purchase of a utility task vehicle or UTV. Vehicle be used for tasks unsuitable for a squad car, things such as pet retrievals, bike path accidents, special officer transportation. And donation funds would cover the full cost of the UTV. There may be a minimal ongoing cost to insure the vehicle, but that would be the only impact on ongoing operating funds. So the Public Works Committee, Public Works and Public Safety Committee did meet and discuss this item and they recommended approval.
I would make a motion to use the donated funds for the purchase of the Newglers Police Department UTV.
I would second that. This is Tammy.
Okay, you seconded it. Mm-hmm. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor... Oh, go ahead. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, new business, discussion consideration, Resolution 2012 to update a 125 plan to conform with CARES Act.
Lynn, would you mind walking us through this one?
Sure. That's it. This is a basic... We have the employee benefits. It's our flexible benefit plan that we offer to our employees. And because of the changes as part of that Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, they're allowing you to use the medical expenses and different things that you can deduct and they're doing things a little differently. So in order to keep our plan current with their plan, they're asking us to pass this resolution to update, to conform with the CARES Act. But it's pretty routine. It's just, they made some rule changes, so they'd like us to stay with them on it.
Does it change dollar amounts or anything, or coverage or anything?
You know, the only thing that would affect most of the employees that have it here is that you can use the medical deduction that you are taking to purchase more items than you used to be able to.
Okay, yeah.
And I can use it a little bit longer time to ask for reimbursement as well. But no dollar change. There's no cost effect to it or anything.
Well, and it actually sounds like it's giving you more, not less, so that's a good thing.
Correct. It gives the employees more flexibility.
Sure, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve that.
Ganser, Mike, I would second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item A, Administrator's Report. Item A, discussion consideration, Board of Review Schedule.
The current Board of Review is scheduled for May 28 at 5:00 p.m. The assessors reported that three property owners attended open book. We have not had any requests for appearances at Board of Review and those would need to be filed 48 hours before the start. So there's still a little time for them. Considering the health guidelines and the... That we've been meeting remotely for many of these meetings, there are two options that we have kind of put together. Is that to limit the amount of time and people that have to be at Board of Review. The first is that we could have a minimum number required for a quorum, which is four in attendance, one of which would have to be the... Have been trained. They can leave during the two-hour session, as long as they're available to return at the end of the meeting or if they're otherwise called to participate if necessary. Meeting would be held in the community room to maintain social distancing. The other option is that the Board of Review can meet at 5:00 p.m. and take the only action to adjourn to a later date in time when things may have calmed down further or we have progressed further into larger group gatherings and COVID-19 has further decreased in active cases. So that is up to the board of which option they may want to take. Either is fine with staff.
Drake, I might just add that I did speak with the assessor earlier this week and she had had an in-person Board of Review in another community and they had seven hearings at that Board of Review. She said she found it went very well and they were easily able to social distance. And I think if we have four board members, myself, the assessor, possibly one other, two other people in the community room, we would be able to social distance sufficiently to allow that. We do have some disposable masks at our office that you could use too if you chose to.
This is Peggy. I'm in favor of the four in attendance and I think we could maintain social distancing. And if it got to be a problem or was an issue, as the other option was, we could go home and come back if that seemed to be an issue. But I guess in terms of people who, you know, since we are serving the community and those who might have an issue, I would rather do it sooner than later in terms of having their properties reviewed.
Are there any concerns that anybody that might want to review would be nervous about coming out at this time? Or you really aren't receiving that there are that many people out there that you don't want to attend?
I have not...
We haven't received a request yet to attend. So no one has let us know that they intend to have a request, a hearing with the Board of Review.
So no one said to you, "Gee, I would really like to do this, but I'm nervous about coming to that kind of meeting at this time," that you know of?
Correct. No, we have not.
And if someone would file that objection and want to appear, we would certainly ask them about their comfort level in doing that?
Sounds good. I say we try to stick with the plan as it is then.
I agree, Peggy.
We need four people to kind of pony up and say they're willing to do that.
This is Peggy. I'd be willing to attend.
Oh, they're roofing.
I don't know. Somebody fell down the steps. Anyway, did I hear you mention Drake or Lynn that there was a 48-hour notice to be given if they wanted to attend this?
Correct, although we do still have the... I'm sorry. The Board of Review does still have to meet even if there is no person requesting to appear.
Okay, I understand that. Ganser, Mike, I would be willing to attend that meeting.
Who's trained? Because I'm not. This is Tammy.
Peggy has the training and Chuck has the training.
Ganser, if I recall correctly, I think only one or two needs to be trained.
Only one person in attendance has to be trained. Two people on the board are currently trained, so just one of those would have to be present at the deliberations.
And I'm Michael Bell would be interested in going as well.
It does sound like, Lynn, we would have enough board members and a trained person available to attend. So we could continue with the May 28.
That sounds good. I caught three names. Peggy, Mike Ganser, Michael Bell.
Tammy also is willing to attend.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Drake, I guess that was a consideration item, so maybe we need a motion on that, huh?
Um, yes, sure.
I'll make a motion that the... This is Peggy. That the Board of Review schedule remain as is for the 28th? Is it the 28th of May at 5:00 p.m., of which there will be a quorum of four in attendance and a trained trustee.
I'll second. This is Tammy.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, discussion consideration, extension of Resolution 20-10.
If you recall, this is the resolution that was approved just over 60 days ago, granting certain authorities to the village administrator, myself. This is an extension of that for 60 days. And this is largely a proactive step in that if there was a resurgence of the COVID-19 pandemic or things got worse, that I would retain those authorities. I apologize for the knocking. Lost my train of thought. I haven't had to use too many of them. There are certain steps, such as closing Village Hall, that I did take, getting the signs put up at parks and playgrounds and athletic fields. So things of that nature. If the board did not want to continue the resolution, then I would probably bring some items back to the board for consideration because without the resolution, I don't believe that I would have the authority to continue. For example, to keep Village Hall close to the public until we started entering the different phases that the governor is still following and is, my understanding, is still going to advise the state on as we proceed through those steps, as well as, you know, the closure of playgrounds and closure of athletic fields like the basketball court, which is still, which our neighbors in Rock County and Dane County are still having closed. So certain things like that, we would need the board, direct board action on if we did not extend this resolution. I am working on a village-wide plan that affects only village-owned property and village-run programs and I'm hoping to share soon with board members. And we will also be discussing summer programs at the Parks and Recreation Committee tomorrow as we discuss how we may want to operate the pool this summer and also baseball and softball programs. So that will be a topic of discussion tomorrow. But largely, this is a proactive approach. I have not had to use many of the authorities that's granted in them, but if things got to a point again where the boards were concerned, we were unable to meet, if board members, you know, fell ill or things like that or staff fell ill, there's certain things in the resolution that I'm empowered to do, that we're just seeking to continue in case there's a... We go backwards instead of hopefully continuing to progress in a positive direction with the pandemic.
This is Peggy. I believe we should extend your authority, Drake, with Resolution 20-10 because it only expedites things in this kind of curious situation rather than having us come back to approve things. This just moves things along in a more proactive way.
Is that a form of a motion?
Yes.
Ganser, Mike, I would second that.
I guess my discussion is, we are keeping the playgrounds and everything closed, even though... I'm just a little confused on how that... What's the authority?
They are currently closed. The village does have authority over its property, even not in a situation like this. So the village is able to close its facilities at its own discretion. Recommendations are still... You know, the health recommendations haven't necessarily changed despite the legal requirements having changed. So we have kept them closed. I have been trying to monitor guidelines that are coming to us from the state, the federal government, as well as at our neighbors in Dane and Rock County reviewing their plans and also the city of Monreel. plans and also the city of Monroe, looking at, at their plans. So currently they are, they are still closed, something that can also be discussed at the Parks and Rec Committee tomorrow as well, about the, what the committee, the committee may think about opening those or, or the plans moving forward. But there, the playground equipment is something that we wouldn't, we can't necessarily sanitize daily, so it does have some health risks associated with it and contact sports obviously, such as, as basketball and team sports where you're sharing equipment and, and things like that do carry some level of, of risk of, of cross-contamination. So at this time, yes, those facilities have remained closed and the signs have remained in, in place.
I guess my concern is, um, pushback. I mean, how long before we get pushback on that if the, if the state lost their ability and county lost its ability? How long are we going to be able as a village to maintain the ability to do that? Are we worried about that at all?
The village, I, I've spoken, I did speak with our attorney briefly, but the village has jurisdiction over its, its, you know, property, over the services it provides. So if you're speaking legally, I think it's, that the village does have the, the power to, to close facilities and restrict activities on its, on its parks and, and fields and things such as that. If you're talking just, you know, public sentiment, I would, I would leave that to, to board members.
I guess I was looking for a legal clarification also because it seems like the, the county lost, the county lost its legal ability to continue to do that and the state lost its legal ability to continue to do that. So I'm just wondering, and I agree with you, Drake, that we have it, so let's keep doing it, but it just, you know, we need, we're probably going to get pushed back on that eventually from the public. I would think we would want to be ready for that.
I, I think you're, this is Chuck. I think you're mistaken, Tammy. The county didn't lose their ability. The state didn't lose their ability. According to the, the legalities, they didn't have, they didn't have the ability. What Drake is saying, we do have the ability to control our property. The state did have the ability to control their parks and their properties. The county, their, their backing off on this was due mainly, in fact, that these weren't their properties. So these are our properties, these are our liabilities if something should happen. So I think, I think, you know, Drake's, Drake's advice from, from our attorney is probably best advised that we do have control over these properties so that if we leave, if we pass this resolution, then we are in good standing legally.
Okay, thank you for the clarification because I was misunderstanding all of this, quite honestly, so that's fine. Are we to the point where we just need to vote or where are we at?
And it is just to clarify that the village, we're not taking any steps to regulate private property or private businesses, just so, just so everyone's clear. This is purely, it's, it's any action, any plan that I'm working on, any, any action that's, that's taken is purely publicly owned facilities, publicly owned land, just village-owned assets and, and services.
Correct.
And we, we may also see a change depending on what happens on the 26th. You know, is he going to extend it or we don't know what's going to happen there either? So I think we'll just have to, we'll probably get more clarification on the 26th and see what happens that day.
I think the 26th is no longer in the picture, but...
He may, he may offer advice as to where we, if we would progress in his plan, but it's not a legally, it wouldn't be a legally binding order as he previously had. The only, the only thing that could occur that our attorney says could happen is down the line, if, if things did get worse again, you know, there's always the possibility another state of emergency is declared and then the legislature in tandem with, you know, the, departments create, create a rule of some sort. But that's, that's delving into the, the details of that, of the legal reasoning, but obviously we will continue to monitor anything that comes from our state government.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on this. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, president's report. Discussion consideration, license fee proration. And I talked to Drake about this and we thought if we could give the licensees a little break because they've been shut down for so long and he figured out proration rate that's in your packet. And the total to the village revenue loss would be only $2,400.
For three months.
For three months.
A proration of three months back to the licensee. So essentially they're, they would pay for nine out of the 12 months for their, for their license.
Gantrit, Mike here. I was wondering about what we could do as village board trustees, what we could do to help the community, specifically business owners in, in getting back on their feet again. And I see this as, as an issue that can maybe help out.
I think it's a good plan. Do we have a way to make up that in our budget?
It's a small enough amount that I don't anticipate any budgetary problems from the loss of revenue.
I'll go ahead and make a motion then that we make that happen, break in Boston.
If I'm hearing you correctly, I hear you saying that it's a motion to approve the license fee proration.
Correct. That was the word I couldn't think of, thank you.
Gantrit, Mike here, I would second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item B, discussion consideration, committee commissioned appointments. Well, I'm still looking for some people yet, citizen member basically. I desperately need a board member to serve on the library board. If anybody's interested in doing that, I would greatly appreciate it. They got to be the liaison between the library board and the village board and they are a voting member by being appointed to the library board. Um, and I need, yeah, I, I just got to come up with a couple of more people to serve, community members, so I'm still working on that. But we need to make a motion to approve the ones we have, that I have in place now, especially for the standing committees, so people can serve on those committees. So, but like I said, the biggest one is the library board. If somebody would be willing to step up to the plate to serve on that committee or that board, I'd appreciate it. You can let me know at a later date. But if we could, someone would make a motion to approve the committee appointments as they stand today, so we can make sure that we have the standing committees approved so they can serve on them boards.
Gantrit, Mike here. And I would, to make that motion to approve the commission, commission appointments as is.
I just want to point out that on the fire district, Chuck Phillips had caught this one. So it should be Tammy Newberry in place of Chuck Phillips on the fire district board and then it was Dustin Hoesley that replaced Karen Talazic. So I would make those two corrections with the approval of this.
And I would roll with that, Peggy.
Lynn?
Thanks.
Thanks, Lynn. Uh, so we got a motion.
I'll second that.
Is that you, Tammy?
Correct, sorry. This is Tammy.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Lynn, are you in tomorrow?
Yes, I am.
Okay, because I think there's a couple of things I'm going to have to sign, correct?
Yes, there will be.
Okay. You'll have them ready by tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. Uh, any further business?
Yes, yes, I have one thing. Roger, this is Chuck.
Yep, Chuck, go ahead.
Okay. At any future Zoom meetings that we have, those of you who choose to, those of you who choose to use your cameras, I would suggest you adjust them for, for perspective, for vertical and horizontal. And I would also suggest that you might want to avail yourself of the current technology to improve your backgrounds and your personal visages. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Chuck.
You got that right, Gantrit, Mike. And Tammy, lower your camera.
Oh, come on. I didn't want to keep having to sit up higher.
And Jeff, whatever you're drinking, I hope it's water.
I can only do that so far because of the way that I've got my, my phone laid out.
I'm sorry, I'm just saying.
I'll, I'll look, I'll...
Okay, here we go. Is that better?
Much better.
Okay. We're adjourned. Good night all.
Bye.